Welcome tonight, everyone, to tonight's not regularly scheduled work session. Thank you for being patient and letting us attend high school graduation last night. Maybe, I don't know, the first time in a long time that three out of the six elected officials had someone graduate from high school last night, so it was pretty exciting. First item on tonight's work session will be discussion of the BBVA Compass Distributed Card Program. Mr. Michael Henson, our treasurer, please come forward. Anyone else that you might need to support you?
Okay, just real briefly, the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, you know, it is the kind of the authoritative figure as far as government financial best policies, things like that, best practices. And this is what they say about purchasing card programs, which is what this is. "GFOA recommends that governments explore the use of purchasing cards to improve the efficiency of their purchasing procedures. The purpose of a purchasing card program is to provide an efficient, cost-effective method of purchasing and paying for small dollar purchases, as well as high-volume purchases. This type of program is used as a supplement to the traditional purchasing process and can result in a significant reduction in the volume of purchase orders, invoices, and checks processed." So just that kind of gives you a picture of this is a, can be a very helpful tool for us. Now, I'll let you introduce yourself and to go.
Yeah, I'm Wesley Warsham with BBVA Compass and a commercial payment specialist with the bank. And what I was gonna do, if it's okay, is was walk through what this is.
Please.
How other cities, counties, school systems are using it and why they're using it. The first thing I'll tell you is what it's not. It's not a credit card. It is, it's a purchasing card or commercial card. The key differences are the controls you can put in place. So with these cards, you can say where they can be used by merchant category code. So for example, you can say, you know, no pawn shops, no liquor stores, no casinos. So you can really limit where they're used. You can say how much can be spent per month, per week, even down to per transaction. And you can say how many times the cards can be used per month, per day. So for example, you could have a card that said, "Pay the pump gas only one time a day for $40 a transaction." The good thing with all of this is it's controllable online, real-time. So you can, you can alter limits, change limits, the administrator can change limits, control the cards, order cards, cancel cards as needed, real-time. The other differences are, the reason I said it's not a credit card is the payment is, the balance is due in full each month. So each, at the end of each month, you would get a statement saying, you know, the city spent $100,000 this month, and it would be due the 14th of the following month. And then the key piece to this also, not only the efficiencies, as Mike mentioned, but also it'll add to the revenue share that y'all are already receiving from us.
You might wanna touch base.
Yeah, so y'all already do have a virtual card system with us, which is, think of what we're talking about today is before you issue a PO. The virtual, virtual card system is after you've been invoiced from a client, when y'all are paying the payable system. And that's that electronic system that produces an individual card for every transaction. So what we're able to-
Yeah, approximately 20, 20% of our invoices that we pay, we pay through this program, and we don't even write a check for those things.
Right, right. And so the good thing is, even though these are two completely different systems, the revenue share will add together to help this, help the city.
And you might wanna talk about revenue here.
Yes, I'll definitely touch on that, yes.
Good, good, because that's significant.
And how the cities that we work with, cities, counties, school systems are using this, is mainly the cities and counties, these cards don't have to be in an individual's name. They can be in the city's name or department's name. And so you can do a few different things. You can have a card in an individual's name, it's for somebody that's gonna need it more often. And you can have departmental cards that are actually checked out when needed. So for example, the, the police department could have a card that when somebody needs to go buy, you know, paper, they could check out the card when they bring it back, bring it back with receipts and check it back in. And it's mainly used for, as Mike mentioned, small-dollar purchases. And the way a lot of cities and counties and schools have looked at it is, anything under a certain dollar amount, let's stop doing POs, let's use these cards to go do our purchases. And the reason they're doing that is, we had one county here in Alabama that did a study, and for every transaction that they had to do a PO for, it was costing them $110 per transaction. So when they wanted somebody to go buy a $5 hammer, it was costing the city $115, or the county $115. So what they're doing is they're setting a dollar threshold, and everything below that threshold, they're using the card. And it's greatly streamlined. Also, when they turn in the receipts, they can take an image of the receipt, attach it to the transaction, code the transaction. And what that does, that makes Mike's life a lot easier, that at the end, he just has a file that can, he can import into his accounting system that, that does reconciliation for him. So the main reason they're doing this is for the efficiencies. It's just freeing up a lot of time for people on the purchases that they're doing. And I mentioned, we do have the online system that allow you to control it all online, real-time. But it also, on the last page, at the bottom of the last page, you'll see the revenue sharing schedule that we do. We actually pay a revenue share in the form of dollars, it's undercumbered funds that we pay the city each month, based on how much you spend that month. And where y'all are right now with the virtual card system, we actually did a new campaign to enroll more vendors, and y'all should be getting to that $166,000 per month. So y'all be earning the 1.05. This spend will add to that. And so you'll be earning at least the 1.05%. Hopefully, we, we hope to get you to that 1.15%.
Well, we hope we spend less.
Yeah, well, that's the thing. Well, that's the thing, the key to this is you're not, we're not asking you to spend more.
We're gonna spend the same.
Yeah.
We're just gonna spend it in a way that earns us money.
Yeah, yeah. So the revenue share is great, but efficiencies is the number-one reason a lot of municipalities are looking to do this. Is there any questions?
I got some questions for Michael.
Yes.
Uh, Michael, would you come to the council with a proposal as to what kind of limits you're gonna put on this? I'd like to, I'd like for us to have at least some oversight. And then, would you be auditing these expenditures? I mean, you ultimately still have to review all the expenditures every month. Is this a lot easier, just going down a list as opposed to individual POs? I would think that it would be. Is that kind of the basis?
Well, the answer to your three questions are yes, yes, and yes.
Okay.
Yes, uh, what was the first question?
Limits, would you propose, limits, and how they would be designed, and who would get them?
What I'll do, what I'll do is I'll kind of put together a document that kind of paints the picture for you. The great thing about this is it is customizable for individual situations. So it won't be a flat, you know, across-the-board $1,000 limit. You could have cards where you have it turned off to zero until somebody has to use it. And they text me and say, "I need $100 on my card. Right now, I'm standing at the checkout line, and I can go online, and in 30 seconds, he's got the $100 on his card." So it's very, very customizable, and that's one of the features of this, is, is, you know, different people have different needs.
How many of these would you anticipate that we distribute?
Well, again, it's all, has to do with the needs that individual people have. I would say at least, at least one per department. But if you have, like, for instance, in the police department, there may be, depending on what the lieutenants do, or whoever does, there may be a use for three, or four, or five cards. You know, it's, it's all-
We're talking 20 maybe?
Well, you know, it-
I'm just a rough number.
Well, and, and one thing that I'd like to get to is to where, anytime somebody goes on a trip, hotel, conference fees, meals, travel, they are able to take a card with them. Like, like, for instance, you know, we have one card, an AMX card. Yesterday, I had to fill out a form, a paper form, a credit card authorization, and fax it to the hotel in DC that the mayor's going to, so that she had her hotel room paid for. And of course, she's having to pay everything out of pocket when she's up there, because we only have one card, and I have it. So this would make it so much easier, especially on trips. So that's just one of the uses.
Any questions, counsel?
I mean, like, day-to-day, you're talking about, you know, a PO for a hammer. I mean, are we really writing POs for a hammer?
Sometimes we are, yeah.
Yes, we are, yeah.
Yeah.
Everything.
So, and one of the, one of the things this ties into is, is that concept of materiality. You know, it's good to, to be accountable for everything we, we purchase, but, you know, sometimes, if it's 10 bucks, you know, you can, you don't have to run it through the same PO system that a $500 charge goes through, or a $1,000 charge goes through. But again, all this stuff is kind of customizable to the particular situation, in a particular department, or a particular person.
That PO system, though, sometimes gives you pause to think, "Do I really need this?"
True.
Is it, is it a need or a want to?
Absolutely. But now, this is for mostly small-dollar things. So, yeah. Just, I guess the one thing I'd ask you is, you know, I've been looking at things we can do to streamline processes, and this is something that will definitely help. So, you know, you kind of, you brought me in to, to do some of this.
I guess, you know, the limits and everything, but different people, if you gave 10 different people a credit card with a $1,000 limit, in, in two days, you'd probably have five that were maxed out and five that had probably spent $10. So it depends on, and so, you know, customize a card for a certain, I mean, I'm not saying anybody has different spending habits in the city that would just go out and willingly spend the money, but fact is, there's people that spend like that.
Well, the good thing is, all, number one, we'll try to catch that before it happens. But all it has to do is happen one time, and I turn the card off to zero. And he's gotta call me when he's standing at the cash register and say, "I need 25 bucks for this thing right here," and I give him 25 bucks.
I see the, you know, benefit, travel makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, yeah.
I can tell you, sometimes, you know, it comes down to putting a requisition in. You may need that item, but then you have to wait for it to go through the whole approval process. So it has to go to somebody else, be approved, so you, you know, you're waiting the whole time for a $10 hammer.
So it's just a matter of taking these small-dollar transactions and making it so that we can execute them as fast and as efficiently as possible. And again, this is not gonna be for, you know, like, a $1,000 purchase order, or something like that. We'll still be using the PO system and running the things of any, you know, dollar amount through there. We'll still have those controls, but, you know, it's like you don't have to look after, you know, a dollar here and a dollar there, like you have to look after 500 here and 1,000 there.
Counsel, uh, I'd like to know what you think the next step is. I'd like to see more details as to what you propose your limits are and start crafting that, you know?
I'll do that.
And getting that into some resolution form, so that we could debate that.
Yeah.
Sound like the next logical step?
Makes sense. Councilman Boone?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, this, you know, credit cards have always been a bother to me, and the fact that it's, it makes spending so easy. And that's, you know, really, I don't know if it works, if the system would work or it wouldn't work. My idea is always, how hard is it to stop it?
Well, I think one of the-
If it doesn't work.
One of the, one of the, the main reason I'm gonna, or the main purpose I'm gonna use it for initially, is for travel purposes. And see, that, that is a big problem, because, you know, like I said, every, anytime anybody has to make a hotel reservation, they have to come to my office, sit at my desk, log onto the computer with the AMX card, I hand them and make their reservation. Or they have to get a credit card authorization form that I have to fill out, fax to the hotel-
If they wanna use the city's credit card.
Correct.
If they wanna use their own.
Correct, but most people would prefer to not use them.
It's a sign of the times, everybody's maxed out and everything, can't afford to pay for one night's hotel room and then get reimbursed.
Yeah. I guess the great thing about this is we can shrink it or expand it based on specific individual people or situations.
And to answer your question, it's real-time. So if you see an issue on a card, you have real-time access to cancel that card, change limits right then. So there's no delay.
I know it would never happen here, but I do know of, of a case in, in the corporate world where somebody had decided they were going to leave the company, and they were in Europe on business, and they decided to jaunt all over Europe. And then, upon return, turned in their notice.
I'll tell you the-
And resignation, and the company was stuck with the bill.
So the moral of that story is, we don't let people go to Europe.
Well, I'll tell you the good thing is-
They could be anywhere. They could be in Orlando at a conference, or New Orleans, and, and, you know, and the point is, is that, yeah, we could stop it, you could see that, but, but, but the whole point is to not just have to sit there and microway manage it. That's the whole benefit of it, is you get a, a statement at the end of the month that you kind of go through, and there's where your time and cost savings is. And it, it's rare that that would happen, but it happens.
And you're protected as well. MasterCard has a protection against employee misuse.
Okay, good.
So an employee misuse is defined as somebody who's authorized to use a card, but uses it in unauthorized manner. So in a manner that doesn't benefit the city, you're protected up to $100,000 per employee.
All right.
As long as you let them go, which I don't think you'd have any problem letting them go.
Any other questions?
I think, I think the efficiency would probably outweigh whatever abuse or overuse would possibly happen. I think it'd be improved.
Give us some details.
I'll put something together.
For that direction.
I'll do that. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wesley.
Okay. Discussion of the proposed amendment to the Personnel Handbook regarding the police department authorized, authorization to take home city police vehicles who live outside the police jurisdiction. Chief, are you gonna speak to this, or who, who actually asked to put this on the agenda?
Chief's gotta speak.
Okay.
Well, it's HR in the police department.
Okay. Then Wesley, do you wanna talk about it?
I'm sorry, it's on the phone, the mayor.
Who wants to go?
Okay. Well, we have been looking at the advantages of being able to allow our police officers to take their vehicles home, and looking at other jurisdictions where that is allowed, if they live within city limits. It is, it is usually allowed in the surrounding areas. And chief has put in a lot of time and effort on it as well. Chief?
Let me give you a little history on this, 'cause I go way back more, longer than just about everybody around. When I got on the police department in 1991, you had to stay in the city limits to take home a car. And you had to, if you didn't live in there, you had a year to move in. So I went through that process. Back, I think it was in 2010, before all of y'all got on the council, the previous mayor went to, he and had turned, wrote a letter that they wanted, no one was gonna take home cars, nothing but the supervisors and the people that lived in the city lim, in police jurisdiction and the city limits. It was fought by the city administrator, at that time Greg Mims, and on the letter, I, I thought I had it with me, but it said that Anonya Mixon would fight this also. We fast-forward, Mr. Burrell and Mr. Boone was on the council, 2013, when I became chief. The mayor called me in, he was looking at the gas prices and the wear and tear on the vehicles and all of that. He said that he was gonna pull it back in, into the jurisdiction. We had some guys living in Mobile, we had some living, some of everywhere. And so basically, this came up in a meeting. The mayor called with the police department and was trying to figure out some of the things that could help the police department and stuff. And so basically, Lieutenant Hammer did a 10-mile radius, he did a 15-mile radius, and he did a 25-mile radius. And this kind of gives you an idea, I, I didn't put names or anything on the map, that is the 25 you're looking at, and you'll see how many people that would encounter, but you still had one or two outside of 25-mile radius. You're on the other side of Mobile, I mean, on the cross the pond with the 25-mile radius. The 15 is on the flip side of that, and that's how many people that would come in. Roughly, when I figured out of 36 officers, we have 16 officers that live outside of the jurisdiction. This is the 10-mile radius, and this, what, 10 miles would bring, bring in, if you want to pass that around. And so what was said at that meeting is that when we have accidents, or we have something bad going on, and we have to call everybody in, like what we had at the roundabout, sometime the officers that's called in are on their way to, in, have to pass by the scene to go get a vehicle to come back to the scene. And that takes a little time.
How often has that happened?
Um, I'd say in the last year, it might be three times.
Was it something severe or something minor?
Well, we have, we had the roundabout incident, the shooting, and usually what happens the other two times, I think it was like wrecks, and we had officers coming on their way, already on their way to work. So they basically wasn't called in like we were at the roundabout. They were, they were on their way to work, but they had to pass by. One time, we had, at the shooting, we had officer, he did come straight there and help block the traffic. He didn't go get his car, he came straight there, I remember.
Well, as I recall, in, in, it was 2013 or 2014, when we passed this, Kevin and I both were on the council, and it passed unanimously. It was that, there had been some wrecks involving people that lived outside of the jurisdiction. I know that there was one officer that did, took a car back and forth, the Baymanet had been involved in two, two wrecks, I believe. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Uh, it was about, we, we talked about the cost savings, and we also talked about the benefit of having a police car presence in the jurisdiction. It's a little bit of a crime deterrent to have one there, but if you're outside the jurisdiction, that's not a, it's not a benefit.
To fair.
To fair, and it, I'm just gonna tell y'all, at, at the risk of, you know, upsetting some police, I, I think that, I'd be willing to look at, you know, maybe, can I look at that radius there?
Yeah.
I'd be willing to look at some of these radiuses, that might be able to pull in some more, but, you know, I, I don't, I don't think that we should allow it, basically, providing transportation to and from for long distances. It's, it's a big expense, and I think we'd cut way back on our expenses, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, when we, when we didn't allow them taking outside of the jurisdiction. But I could also think of some cases where, and I'll just make up a hypothetical situation, let's say somebody lived in the south side of Daphne, or they may only be three or four miles from the station. They may be a lot closer to the station than somebody that lives down near the airport. And so to allow that person to not take a car home because they might be in Daphne's police jurisdiction, doesn't make sense when you have, when they're twice as close as the person that might live down in Barnwell. So I, I would think maybe we wanna consider a, a radius from the police, from the police station, as opposed to, if we're gonna change this, that is, as opposed to, say, in a police jurisdiction. Anybody thoughts on that? And I'll just throw a number out. I'll say, the 15-mile radius looks pretty darn generous to me.
Chief, you said we had 16 that currently live outside the jurisdiction?
Yes.
I mean, my thought would be, you know, that's 16 people driving around in city vehicles, driving some of them longer distances than others. I mean, you get in a wreck, coming to work in your own car, and it's your fault, it's on you, you get in a wreck, coming to work in a city car, that creates an issue for the city. And it's just, I mean, and you're expanding that liability, and driving around on a day, on a day-to-day basis, you're increasing that risk and that responsibility of the city for these people getting back and forth to work, that you otherwise wouldn't have if they were driving their own vehicle in and around. And I mean, that's not enough reason alone to deny it, or, but that's obviously something to consider in looking at it.
And I also know that police are good people, and, and not to take advantage of them, but if they're literally on their way to the station, how many times have you had, you know, seen or heard of an off-duty policeman, you know, getting out and assisting, maybe it been an accident victim? I've been in one, like, when I was a child myself, where an off-duty officer stopped, or an officer may have been on the way to the police station and stopped to help my mom and I out. So it doesn't mean that they necessarily have to pass by an incident and then go back to the incident either. I, I think those situations would be, would be rare.
One, I'm sorry, go ahead. One question is, when they're calling, they're not the primary being called in to, they're called in to assist, is that correct?
Yes, they're called in to assist.
Yeah.
We, we have officers out, but we have something going on. It could be somebody running from us, or whatever, kind of like the shooting out there, and then we need the roads blocked and, and stuff like that, whatever. And then, that, the shift that's on the street is take, is taken off the street on this incident. It's like, if we get a bad wreck, say, at, at the roundabout, you can't block the traffic right at the roundabout, you gotta go back up to Valana, I mean, not Valana, but up to, yeah, Valana, and block it at the light. You gotta go back down Main Street and block it down there, so that's two. Then you gotta go out to the full lane, there's three officers that's not really working the wreck.
Right.
But, and you might have two or three officers on the scene at the wreck. So you, the whole shift might be there, and you need people, you know, to patrol, or we just hold calls until we get the other people there.
Wesley, you said that there, that some of the cities neighboring us do let everybody take it home?
Mm-hmm.
Do they have any sort of limit on, on radius from the location, or is it just you live wherever, you take it home?
Not that I know of. I know when I lived in Mobile, I had, actually, my neighbor worked for the city of Mobile, and then he went to the sheriff's office. And, and I was excited to have a neighbor that had that. It was, it was great. It was a huge thing for my neighborhood to have a police car.
But they were in their jurisdiction, right? Their jurisdiction was Mobile County. So that's still within their jurisdiction. Let me ask you something about, I don't see the west side of that 15-mile radius. You know, if we were to consider something like that, and we go over there and we get a piece of code in Alabama, they're, they're driving 40 miles to get here, although they might be in a 15-mile radius. So-
Baldwin County.
Yeah. 15-mile radius within Baldwin County, maybe. I hate to say that, 'cause if you, if you extend it across that bay, you could, you might get somebody in 10- or 15-mile radius that's driving 40. And then you're, then you're cutting out somebody that might live 20 miles in Baldwin County, and but allowing somebody that's driving 40 from Mobile County.
What makes the most sense to you, chief?
Well, I, I've looked at the whole thing, and like Wesley say, you have people that work in Foley. I met one yesterday afternoon, he lives right there on Twin Beach Road. I have a neighbor that's an investigator, which is a whole different ballgame, because they don't call, so I, I can't count him, but he lives, he really lives closer to Foley than the one I just mentioned. You have, when the mayor first called me and asked me about this, I was telling her, she emailed me, and it was just a general question, and I was telling her, I say, "Yeah, they have police officers that, that drive these cars home, and they take these cars and stuff." But, you know, I was talking with someone today, and they were saying that, and, but our, our handbook denies you from doing that. They go grocery shopping, they do all of this stuff in the car, and stuff, and we can't do that. I mean, that's, we wouldn't change that. But that's one of the things that I kind of look at, the further you get, if you, if you get over into Mobile or somewhere, you really don't know what's going on with the car. I, I like the idea of the officers having the cars, to be able to respond, and, and if we call them, and they'll be, have a car, and be able to come out and help us. That didn't answer your question, right? Clearly.
Yeah.
I'm gonna tie that down.
I mean, I think what y'all, what y'all said, maybe a 10- or 15-mile radius within the confines of Baldwin County.
Jay, to that point, I, I, when I thought about this earlier today, I thought 10 miles, and then I thought, well, I'm probably, being conservative, so I'm gonna add 50% of that and come up, and then said, and I, I kind of thought 15 miles.
From the looks of this, you're cutting- From the looks of this, you're cutting out, I mean, you're, you're adding in these squares or people.
Right.
Yeah, I think to look at that with people on there, you know, as a...
By expanding from ten to fifteen?
When you start bringing in the people, though, you start trying to count numbers, and that's, that's hard to do, because you're bringing in...
Well, that, that was one of the reasons.
That you're starting to think of who you're leaving in and who you're leaving out, and I think you gotta kind of close your mind to that.
Yeah, well, that's why...
Or you'll start playing games, well, we're just going another mile, we'll get one more or two more, and you're trying to make policy for the next twenty years, and it's hard to, it's hard to do.
But, but I think really what, what some of the departments also do is, the Sheriff Department, you know, they're totally different, but what some of the departments do is, they do have a distance you can drive, because you, i- i- if it's unlimited, it's, it's a distance, if, if you ask them, because if it's unlimited, you basically might stay in Montgomery if you wanted to get up early enough and drive, you know, drive to work. So, I doubt if anybody would want to do that, but, three hours, but...
If we changed it to be fifteen mile radius within Baldwin County, would I get any support on that next meeting?
I'd do that, you know, being honest with you, I like the way it is. I don't see the problems that we, of what occurrence or what problem we're having, uh, to change.
I, I thought, just because that Daphne example is a, is an example of where you might be hamstringing yourself a little bit, and have somebody that actually lives closer to the station than others that aren't even allowed to take it home.
Well, you know, again, it's very difficult to make it fair for what I call everybody.
That's true.
And so, you know, I guess it's a function of, and it's the best, what's the best answer for Faro? And with the money savings that we have been incurring with this, like I say, I, you know, and again, I'm, I'm, I'm still have an open mind to it, I just, overall, with this being brought up, I just kind of like the way it was.
Is it used as a recruiting tool?
Well, um, some, some departments, I think they do use that as a recruiting tool, because I remember, um, some years ago, we had an officer from Mobile, he was a great officer, and he left, because when they took the car from him, he left, because he was driving, uh, some kind of, um, it was a big SUV, and he said he was paying eighty dollars in gas, um, every two weeks. And so, that was, and so, he went to the Sheriff Department over Mobile, and he was making the same thing, and he was close to the home, he lived in Mobile.
He should have moved to Faro.
Well, it's economics.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you, if you get it in too tight, you're gonna have police that can't afford to live here, so I think it would be a recruiting tool.
Yeah, and, and I, I went over and talked with Lynn, uh, I mean, Leslie, uh, last week, and I was telling her what some of the departments are doing now in the bigger cities, they're often signing bonus, signing bonus, five thousand dollars, um, it's up in Washington somewhere. And they also, what they're doing is, when you come in to do your run, your interview, and all of this stuff, they put you up in a hotel and all of that, that's one of the things, it hadn't made it down south yet, might be another ten years before they start doing this, but, um, with the way law enforcement is going, and the well the world, I should say, is going and everything, it, it's, everybody in Baldwin County is three or four people down. I think the sheriff, last time I talked with him, he, he was looking for fifteen, and so...
Councilman Carter, some thoughts?
Um, you know, I'd certainly like to see our, take care of our police, and I'd love to see them get, get paid more. I, I, I kind of, looking at it from the perspective of what's best for the city, uh, it seems like the one, the ordinance you have in place is, is probably pretty proper. I mean, keeping it within the jurisdiction, I mean, that's where you need the cars to be seen, that's where they can be, um, in service and of use. I mean, I, I can see it being a recruiting tool, but then again, you get, and Kevin's comment, I mean, it's impossible to make it fair to everybody unless you just say everybody gets to take the car home. You can't do that to, to the chief's point, if somebody were living in, in Montgomery, you can't have them driving back and forth every day.
Well, let me just step out there and just tell you what I didn't want to really tell you. The chief lives at one block outside the jurisdiction, you gonna make an exception?
I mean, I, I would have figured that the chief would be, would be an exception, just because...
Well, it used to be, I think it changed, isn't that right?
No, he, um, it, it, it is the exception, but, I mean, I, it, really, it's, it's about the men, it's not about me. Cause I, you know, I, I, I have, I have three vehicles.
You can park it top of the street and then run home and run...
No, I, I can leave it at the station, and then I can, I can come, I can come in and, and get it, it's not a big deal. But that's one of the things they're looking at, too, and, and we're not looking at this. Uh, our parking lot is shrinking, because we have so many people that have to drive their personal vehicle along with the people that's coming to work, so now we have a lot of people parking in the back, parking lot.
I did talk to one police officer, and he was giving an example of, if there is something that happens inside the jurisdiction, and the officer lives outside, he hops in his car, and as soon as he gets into jurisdiction, he calls in and says, this is so-and-so number, blah, 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 I'm in jurisdiction, I'll be there in a few minutes, otherwise, if he's two or three miles outside jurisdiction, he's gotta drive all the way back to the station to get his car before he gets back to the, you know, how many times that happen, I don't remember.
He said, three, nice.
Well, take care of those guys and...
Well, one thing is...
Fifteen mile radius sounds good.
On the fifteen mile, and you're past Robertsdale.
Yeah.
Whereas the ten mile, you're not.
Well, it's, it's generous, that's why I thought that was pretty generous, so it was, it was not, it wasn't anywhere, but it was pretty generous, and it was a good recruiting tool, fifteen miles is reasonable.
You might get more, yeah.
That's what I said, I, and the twenty-five, to me, was really stepping out there, but fifteen, fifteen got a lot of tens, like I said, I really wish we didn't have all these squares on there, because then you start counting numbers, but it, it does make a difference.
Actually, I, I was more than that, counting cities.
Well, well, th- this is the jurisdiction in yellow.
Right, no, I'm with you there.
Fifteen's out here.
Well, we, we gotta get it, if we're gonna change it, let me know what y'all want written up, or, or we could debate it again. We can wait till, we can put it on the agenda and, and have another debate, doesn't matter.
Now that we got this, we'll see how many times we get hammered during the week on...
We'll get hammered, we'll get phone calls, I'm already getting...
On how to, uh, what we need to do.
If, if I could say something, I understand that it's only been three times that that's happened, but all you need is one really bad time. You know, we're lucky that the three times weren't notable, but...
Again, part of that is, that's why I was asking, is this an assist or a primary? And I understand, you, you, you know, you do, it's not like you don't have police on the scene.
Yeah.
Because of a problem, it's just, you just, you may need a couple more that are gonna be detained, you know, three times, or whatever, which you still have police on the scene, whether the problem is.
It's hard to pass policy based on the point oh-one percent. I mean, you start making policy based on, you gotta get ninety-nine point, nine-nine percent of the probabilities, you get pretty darn inefficient to hurry.
I mean, I mean, I would, I, I, I think some, one of the things we had, we've talked in general about expense, but we haven't talked specifically enough about what impact this would have on the expense. I mean, if it's a huge increase for maybe some limited benefit, then maybe, maybe not. I think maybe we need more specifics. I mean, I, in, in general, without knowing specific numbers, I would be in favor of a, you know, ten or fifteen radius within the Baldwin County jur, within Baldwin County. But if I saw a figure that said this increases expense by two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year, maybe I wouldn't be. I mean, do we, is there any way that we could put some sort of...
Uh, Chief, did you have some numbers on that?
No, no, um, we have this great new system that we put in, um, down at the gas pump, and it's supposed to tell us all of this stuff, so I guess we can get that data.
Well, you won't get data for people that aren't taking it home, though.
No, but what I'm saying is, we, we know what, what we, we got going on now, and we would have to, what we'd have to do is see exactly, John, John could sit down on his computer and see how far it is, and then we can get the mileage on the vehicles, we have that, on, on the data.
If we've got thirty-six total, and sixteen, and twenty are using them, and sixteen's not, I'd just see what double the current gas total is. I mean, that would be close enough, just for a, a rough ballpark number to see how much we're talking about.
Well, we'll look at our monthlies, our gas sales, and...
Yeah, but I mean, that's not broken down by police, is it?
It's...
Maybe I should admit it, I don't look at it that close, take it back.
All right. So we're not there yet, we don't have to be, work session.
I don't believe anybody's unopposed, you know, is just absolutely opposed to it, it's just a function...
Well, I'm just trying to see whether or not we need to move, what, what the next step is, if, you know, if we don't have, we're not there yet, then we can bring it back in here and talk about it again, or...
Well, the biggest reason this was implemented is the fact that trying to save money on fuel and cut down exposure of wrecks or this type of problem, which it obviously has done. Now, the question is, by, by expanding it just a little bit more, you know, what do you increase it? Obviously, it's gonna get increased, but what do you increase it to?
Yeah.
And you can either do it off percentages or something of that nature, if, if one car, you know, with thirty-six people doing it, uh, you're gonna add, whatever that expense is that you have, you can add a percentage of what we'll be using with, say, a ten or fifteen mile radius to the expense of the city.
And in ninety-one...
What I would say would be the best way to handle, as far as looking at expense only. Exposure, you know, it's, uh, you're gonna have that no matter what you do, where you are, inside the city limits or not, you're still there.
So if there's, if there's a couple of accidents outside of the jurisdiction, people will be back here in eighteen months wanting to change it back to can't leave the jurisdiction?
Oh, man, yeah, everything's always open for discussion.
All right, well, counsel, let us, let clerk know.
Yeah, can we add it, I mean, can we look at, take, have the time to look at some of those numbers, and then can we put it back on the work session next time?
Yeah, we don't have to...
With the idea that we can add it to the agenda from the work session?
We don't have to be in a hurry about this, this is not something that has to be changed. Yeah, we don't, yeah, we don't have to...
Yeah, I mean, like I say, I, I mean...
Just because it came up?
Yeah, I mean, I'm generally in favor of it, I mean, I, I, you know...
Of a change, you mean?
Of, 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 of a change, yeah, I mean, for, for several reasons, but I mean, I just would like to see a little bit more information about it, to make sure I'm not making a...
All right. All right, Angela, Chief, thank y'all.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, item three, discussion of proposed amendment to personnel handbook regarding exempt salary employees and clocking in and all non-exempt employees, that is, employees paid for all hours worked in excess of forty hours of work week to have an automatic deduction for unpaid meal period.
I'm going to explain the background on this, and Jill, with some background help from Nancy, is gonna explain how it works. Basically, what we have with the current system is, uh, costing the city money in two different directions. If you have an employee who's at a work site and meal break comes up, he has a choice of going and finding a place to clock in or clock out for lunch break, and then taking lunch break, and then clocking back in and getting back to his workplace, wherever that might be. In that case, the city is paying for that person to get to and from the clocking site. And that is unproductive time that we're paying for. The other scenario you have is the individual doesn't clock out at all, takes lunch at the work site, which is, makes sense, why waste time going to find a clock and then, uh, waste that time? So now you have a situation where the city's paying for an eight-hour day, but getting seven and a half hours of work because the lunch hour or half hour was taken. And that happens because of the current procedure, those scenarios happen. So what we're recommending is an auto deduct for lunches for every single, um, non-exempt employee in the city. And that auto deduct happens, the city gets its eight-hour work day from all of its employees that it is paying for. The employee gets the lunch that they are supposed to have, that gives them that time, that break time in their work, refreshes them, makes them a healthier employee for us, and, um, puts everybody on the same page.
Are the lunch periods the same in every department?
Gen, uh, lunch periods by, by the book, or anywhere, from thirty, thirty to sixty minutes, and it depends on the department.
So it's not consistent? So, but basically, what you're saying is, you're gonna work, or you're gonna be at work for either eight and a half or nine hours, and you're gonna automatically deduct thirty minutes or an hour?
Mm-hmm, so that there is an eight-hour work day.
So, the person that says that they are gonna skip lunch and go home an hour early that day can no longer, can no longer do that, is there an out for that person? What if that's, you know, legitimate? I mean, that's, what if they have to get to their kids, you know, something very special, and they do truly skip lunch? Can we have some supervisory judgment, permissions for that?
Yeah, we have that built into the system.
Ask their supervisor if they can do that?
Yep.
That's what, that's the only hangup I have to that.
And that is provided for in the recommendation we're making, that any, any time a, a lunch break is not taken, or a meal break is not taken, it is approved by the supervisor, and is so noted on their time card.
Plus, this wouldn't be clock, I mean, this would just be deducting that time from their, from their accrued amount for the day, and it's not gonna know the specific time they're going to lunch, so...
Yeah, but...
All of that is controlled by the supervisor.
Yeah.
You know, in, in my experience, you typically know who those people are that are abusing the system, and the supervisor can take it up with them, I, I probably, I just want to make sure that we're not overly harsh on the employees. They, they have to be given some time, they're gonna be, everybody's gonna have a time where they skip lunch, and they want to leave early, or they came in early because they want to leave.
Absolutely, and that, that's...
And then, so like, somebody, let's say, wants to put in their eight hours, and they want to come in at seven AM and work till three all the way through, they get to check in, uh, clock in or clock out. It, it has to reflect that, seven AM check, clock in and three PM, clock out.
And then they work with their supervisor, who, and the supervisors are taking back the reconciliation of the time cards of their employees, and then they deal with, um, payroll administrator or, or the city accountant on final reconciliation before payment, uh, before the pay, paycheck is, is written.
What happens if you have a gas employee, and I know that I'm coming up with some examples that may or may not happen, but I think they're, they're very possible. Let's say you got a gas employee who's working up near Baymanet that day on a Friday, and their son plays on the high school football team, and they're, we're playing Baldwin County that night in, in, in Baymanet, and that person's gonna have to drive from Baymanet to Faro to clock out, and then turn on a drive back to Baymanet to watch the ballgame?
Works that out with a supervisor, a supervisor can, can check him out.
Can the supervisor clock him out?
Yes, he can.
Okay. So they can use some common sense approach on that?
Absolutely, yeah.
I don't think we should expect them, not only that makes them inefficient, because they're gonna have to drive...
That's right, it's the inefficiencies.
Forty-five minutes to clock out, lose forty-five minutes of productivity when they say, thank you, well, I could have stayed here until five o'clock and be right here.
Right, it's, it's the inefficiency we have right now that we're trying to, to get rid of and make it all more efficient, but all of those situations are something that the employee works with their supervisor, and, and shoot, we can accommodate just about everything.
As long as we have that common sense, that we can accommodate that.
And the supervisor is ultimately responsible. Except I've got it, you know, that try that, and what happens is, you need two or three guys, well, one guy's continually trying to leave early, and it's a two-man task, and then you're left with...
That's what I was gonna bring up, is in a crew effect, where you have a crew working, a four, and three of them wanna continue to work, one doesn't, it shows that, slows down, or vice versa, it slows down the efficiency.
That's, that's the supervisor takes control of that situation.
I mean, that's basically how we, I did it.
Mm-hmm.
Makes sense.
And, uh, to me, I like this a lot better.
Now, in addition to that, we are, we are asking to change, um, requiring exempt employees to clock in. Currently, they clock in, they don't have to clock out, they're just autom, they're being paid from schedule, is that the correct term?
No, um, currently, the system is they just clock in when they report to work, and then through our timekeeping system, their time card is automatically populated with eight hours. And they don't clock out at the end of the day. That's just to, um, show that, the way it's currently done, to show that they came to work that day, and what time they got there, and then, but since they're salaried, they don't clock out for lunch or anything like that, or keep track of when they went home, they just automatically do eight hours.
They're assumed to be adults and to be responsible, that they have a job that they've been hired to do, not a number of hours they've been hired to work.
So, let me make sure, so maybe I misunderstood, yeah, it's a lot of small print right here on this thing. You said they are required to clock in but not clock out?
Currently, they are.
But you want to change to where they have to clock out?
They don't have to clock in, we want to...
Oh, not at all?
Yeah, just take them off the clock.
Yeah, I, I like to go that way rather than the other way.
Oh, yeah, no, no, it's taking them off the clock altogether. They still have to get ahold of, um, Nancy or, or Lauren, uh, to reconcile... They still have to get ahold of Nancy or Lauren to reconcile for sick days and vacation days. But otherwise, you know, as I said, they were hired to do a job, not to work a certain number of hours.
Salary works, and quite often works late nights.
Very often, they work more than the eight hours a day. And we know some here at this table.
Any thoughts for that, counsel?
Makes sense to me.
Yeah, I mean, if, if somebody got into the habit of just not showing up, but, you know, we would know pretty quick, right?
And that, that presents a whole different scenario that, that you deal with.
Say, not to clock in at all, ever, and then or clock out to even show that you showed up for work.
But you know.
Let's hope that we would know.
Yeah, we know.
I'm sure that word will get around quick.
Oh, real quick. Because that means somebody else taking up that task, and then someone else isn't going to be happy for very long.
Yeah, I've never been a big fan of that clocking in and out for, for salary.
Well, you know, they, they are adults.
Well, so are the non-salary people. They're adults too.
That's true. But there's exempt and non-exempt, and...
Any other changes?
No.
All of that? Counsel?
I don't have a problem with either one of those myself. I think it's a little bit better, especially the lunch deal, because I, that, to me, is a complete waste of time to drive all the way in, clock out, or do all this.
Don't worry about somebody who's driving in quickly, so he can, he or she can get her lunch, period.
And you only got X number of minutes anyways.
That's right.
I got to spend 10 of it, one way and 10 the other.
I mean, and you're, you're using up gas unnecessarily, wear and tear on a vehicle unnecessarily.
I can see why that's very beneficial.
Jimmy?
No, I'm, I'm good with what you posed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Johnson?
Good evening. How are y'all doing?
Good.
I will add just two little bits of information. On the P card, very familiar with using them, and I'll give you a real-world example. What I'm used to doing is, we'd still do a purchase requisition, but like, for example, there's a lot of training opportunities, one that we're taking our street crew leader and our assigned person to, but that training really only wants to be registered online. So we would do a PO and let it know that we were requesting to pay with the P card. As soon as the PO was processed, the treasurer would put the $125 per person on the P card, and we would register for the training. That way, there's, there's, you know, there's complete controls in. The other thing is, is that I'm used to seeing a P card when it, if, for example, I do know that you have employees, that they're on the job, and they need a $1.35 part to finish the job. They're paying for it out of their pocket because they don't want to lose a day to complete a job, to get a purchase requisition for a $1.35 part. And what we did with those is that we actually would, as soon as the receipt came in, it would be GL'd to what job it was expensed to, or what, what project or budgetary line, and actually, it was submitted with almost like a check requisition, but it's saying paid with credit card, and, and the amount and everything else. So there's ways that it can be very effective and also have good controls in it as well. And I, and I will tell you, on the chrono system with timekeeping, in public works, which we're probably, just like the utilities, we have the most unique cases of individuals that do, like a, a solid waste operator, he's an individual person, so if he drives through lunch, all he does is he lets his supervisor know that on Wednesday, I work through lunch, and then that adjustment is easily made by that supervisor in, in that. Now, if it's a street crew and it's a team of four working in construction, yeah, they kind of got to be on the same boat, that when it's break time to have 30-minute lunch, the whole crew's taking the lunch at, at that together. And, you know, you can work through those things, but having a crew working at Fairhope docks, and they have to come back to public works to clock out, to sit there and eat their, their sack lunch, which they could have enjoyed under an oak tree up there, we did spend probably 30 minutes of windshield time just to facilitate that punch in and punch out for lunch. So, thank y'all for considering that. I know I sent you big fat packages. I'm accused sometimes when people ask me what time it is, I tell you how to build a clock, but I kind of wanted you to, to, to get into my mind and some of the issues that we're dealing with. And under recycling, not asking for any action today, or really anytime soon, because this is an ever-developing issue, as you know, the, the greatest challenge that we have in recycling is finding buyers for all of our commodity production, and our most greatest challenge is that commodity that has the plastics in it, the 1 through 7s. We had a tenuous relationship, such as every other municipality that was doing recycling, with, with a buyer in Locksley. He is out of business and shuttered his doors. Luckily, the Emerald Coast Utility Authority made a big investment in a materials refuge reclamation facility over in Contonment. They have allowed us to bring that material that we can't find a buyer for. It is a wonderful facility, we've toured it. We've been able to transport that material and, and keep it in the recycling stream by using existing personnel and existing available time with existing trucks. And that's because you've been generous to get our fleet modernized, and we can, we can make that haul. But it's, it's, it's 30 miles each way. That's the reality of it. The problem is, is ECUA's facility wants to get their clients under contract. They're willing to be patient with us, but I think that willingness to stay patient may have, have a, a, a cap on it. Here's the biggest problem that we're challenged with, our co-mingle stream, that, that material that has the plastics in it, and some mixed paper, some aluminum, some tin, no glass, thank goodness, which really puts us in a, an unique position, and our recycles are very clean because of the way our customers treat it when they bring it to the curbside, and the way we collect it, we have a ability to make sure that there's no contamination and that we have a good product. So at least they like our material as a product. The problem is, that co-mingle stream, commodity prices keeps dropping and dropping. The industry will tell you that, that they have to be able to take that stream and sell it on the open market for a collective $95 a ton for them to break even. Anything, any times that that dollar falls below that, then they're losing money on the proposition. What ECUA has proposed is a sliding scale. When their commodity market is paying X, there's a potential for a commission to be paid per ton, and if it falls below a number, then a tipping fee has to be applied. I included in here a example of a contract that the city of Mobile is entering into with ECUA. They sent us in a Word format and says, "We can customize to our own needs." I think eventually, we may be back before you, after Marcus's looks at this contract, and, and we would have to make some significant changes because Mobile's committing 100% of all of their recyclers. We do not want that, because we still have non-co-mingle streams, where we are having some success selling cardboard, some mixed paper, metals, and things of that nature, and we want to continue to, to at least see some revenue from that. The good news is, is that this past week, we were approached by a smaller MRF operation in Mobile, Carestar, and we sent them several sample loads. They have evaluated it, and we're meeting with them on Friday, and they may be willing to work with us with no contracts. And, and, and again, on if, if, if the product is good and the market is, is reasonable, there's a commission to be paid, but it, even if it's a zero net gain, the distance is half the distance to Contonment, and we're hoping that works out. But that's the challenge where we are in recycling, and we may get to a point to have a place to keep our recycle, all of our recyclers in the stream. We may need to go under a contract with an entity such as ECUA. Any contract that, that I would recommend to you would not be exclusive, could be ended at any time of our choosing with reasonable notice, and it would have to be capped that if the commodity market fell to a point where the, we had to pay the recycler more than we would pay to put it in the landfill, we'd have to come back to you for guidance and advice on that. Where do we, where do we go next? I don't think it will fall that far, but they're predicting 18 months minimum of a zero-value commodity on, on, on that mixed stream recycling.
Let me ask you that, Richard. I'm, I'm looking here, it says mixed paper in October 2017 was $80 a ton. Today, that's worthless.
That's right. They paid us...
Okay, so what is mixed stream? Could that include paper?
Yes.
Could it be better off, just, you'd say your paper with the, this is, is mixed basically unsorted?
Mixed paper is, is just what it sounds like. That is, that is paper products that, that are, may have some cardboard in it, may have some paperboard in it, may have new stream.
What's mixed stream?
Mixed stream is plastics 1 through 7, and may have co-mingled aluminum, may have co-mingled tin cans, may have co-mingled cardboard and mixed paper.
Is that if you basically dump all your recyclers in one container?
I'm saying so, you're better off, yeah. But you're doing off, just not even sorting anything, you're selling them mixed stream right now, right?
But, well, that's, as I kind of, in my narrative...
If you sold it to this company.
Yeah. The, the nice thing is, is on our backdoor service for our commercial accounts, they're the producers of most of our cardboard. Most of our business customers produce a lot of recycled cardboard, so we get it in, in nice, clean lots. So we, we, that's very easy to process, it's very easy to bail, and as you can see, even cardboard today is still holding on to a $80 a ton.
Yeah, so the stream is 85 a ton.
Well, and, and that's not what they're paying us. That is what they're saying, the, the, I shouldn't, I should have, I should have explained that better.
Say, you're not meeting the point in, in sorting anything. If we're getting more money for it being mixed than, than separating the cardboard.
That is what the MRF today says, they can sell the byproducts that they reclaim from that mixed stream. And when you go to their, their matrix right now, that means at $85 a ton, we would have to pay them $2 a ton to take it, okay? So, so for example, if they can sell it for 95, it's, they don't pay us anything. If they can sell it for 105 or less, they'd pay us $5 a ton. So I, I, this, this does read poorly, and I apologize for that. So I just wanted to show you that how, on the mixed stream, how the, the commodity price has dropped.
Okay.
On OCC mixed paper and cardboard, we're still, we're still sorting that because we have a source that gives us a clean thing, and we're selling that on the commodity market ourselves, whereas the mixed stream is, that is that, that, that residential, street-side pickup that we are not post-sorting, that we're having trouble getting a buyer for, where we don't have to pay them to take it. And right now, the commodity market on it is $85 a ton, which, in the matrix for the MRF in, in Contonment, means that we would pay them $2 a ton to take it to them. So I, I'm sorry that's confusing. I'm hoping that the Carestar works out, even if it, right now, it's, we don't pay them anything, we know we're getting into the recycle stream, and we're cutting our round-trip distance by half, which is a, a benefit. I've seen this before in the recycle market, and I've also seen it when we were making $55, $57 a ton on a mixed stream. So I'm hoping those days are going to come back to us one day, but, but we've got to get through this. Our program is healthy, our equipment is in good shape for the first time, our on-time service, but finding a, a, having a plan B, having a plan of how we're going to handle that, because I added to you the article in the Pensacola News Journal at the end of it, that the city of Pensacola's been putting their recycles in the landfill for the last 30, 90 days. And I don't want, I don't, that's not responsible recycling. So we're, so I just wanted you to be aware of the, of the challenge that we're doing with that, and where we're trying to get to. And, you know, I think the market will come back, but right now, the outlook is not good for a period of time. And one good news is, bad news on the operations side, but as fuel prices go up, normally, the commodity prices recycled go up as well, because it's an equation that when there's a certain price of petroleum, that it makes it a better deal for manufacturers to reclaim recyclers to make new product as opposed to using a virgin product out of petroleum. So the, the second recycling operation is, as you probably are aware, that we, we use the state inmate program that is managed out of the camp in, in Locksley, Alabama, as our key employees for what we consider hopper operation. That is the person that works on the back of the solid waste truck, whether it's recycling or garbage, that are not automatic, meaning that there's a bin or a cart that has to be brought to the back of the truck and emptied, and then moved to the next location and all. We've also would use those individuals when we did have some sorting operations in our recycle center, as well as we've had at times, use them when we were painting vehicles in the body shop or doing body shop work of that. That program is not a panacea, it's not a perfect program. I will tell you that there has been an uptick in behavioral issues, and that has been problematic for us. When there is a violation by that inmate trustee, we have to shut all of them down, load them in the van, and return them to the workers' camp, and, and then they, the state takes it from there. The other issue that we've encountered is that they have started strictly enforcing some weather requirements. As you know, we had a real winter for a change this year, and we, in calendar year 2017, and in the first quarter of this year, we probably lost 25 days where they would not release inmates to that program because either temperatures were too low, or during the summer, the temperature heat index was too high. And what that caused us in those 25 operational days is that means folks from horticulture or streets had to come in and serve in those roles, which then again, was a morale issue as well as an operational issue. Spent some time with the, the sanitation supervisor and talking about...
Let me, let me stop you for just a minute, Richard. We are 10 minutes past the work session already, and we still got about three more items to go through, so...
Well...
I'm, I'm very interested in what you have to hear, but we're going to have to...
Very short of it. We're, we're looking at the budgetary effect of eliminating inmate program and going with full, four full-time employees, three with recycling, one for garbage for backdoor as a hopper. And based upon just budgetary numbers, we, we have approximately $121,000 worth of budget liability associated with the inmate program, and to bring in four employees that are grade 13 would be about a $129, $130 budgetary obligation. Those numbers are in there. And that is something that we would like to at least have you consider as part of the budget process as we start going through that. I just, I think that, that having an accountable employee that we know is going to be there doing their job, and eliminate the risk and liability, because it's tough on our employees to have to kind of be the, the guard during the day, and, and it's tough to put them in that situation, maybe when one of those inmates are not behaving in a manner that they need to be behaving in, and they have to kind of police, and then we have to, to react as required.
Does that $129 include benefits, social security and everything? Is that totally loaded in number? Is it a little light?
I used a 25% overhead, which is about $6,500 per employee. That may be a little low. I know when the, the pay scale goes down, the percentage goes up of overhead, and that's one of the things that I do want to work with Jill to get a, a much more accurate number.
These will be full-time employees?
Full-time employees, grade 13. And just so you know, the, the grade 13 is a 960 is the low, 1248 is the mid, 1535 an hour is the high. Using the mid, the annual salary is 25, 958. I used a multiplier of 1.25 for benefits, retirement, et cetera, which would be 32...
Close. Well, yeah, but the 25% doesn't work on the lower...
Yeah, it probably is closer to 33%.
Your healthcare benefits are equal to whether you're making 25 or 75, and so...
Yes, sir.
It's really about 40% for that, just for that.
And, and I will get you better numbers when we get into that budgetary process, but that was, you know, we're trying, trying to be revenue neutral, at least budget neutral, but I don't think we're going to be able to squeeze it exactly.
About three.
Pardon?
About three.
Well, that's, that's the challenge, is that we're, you know, we, we're running three recycle trucks, and we'd have one backdoor service on garbage. Those are rear loader trucks, so it, it, it would just be hard to do with three.
Four, you said four employees?
Four employees, yeah. Three, three?
It'd be about 160 probably, it's not too far.
And very quickly, just, just so, this will be something you will see if you are comfortable with it, we were approached by the state through their highway safety improvement grant project. They identified the intersection of North Section 104, City and Veterans, and Senec 98 as a good candidate for a highway safety improvement project. They asked us to do a little of the data crunch, and you have those sheets, and even using a little bit higher numbers than what Volker came back with, our cost-to-benefit ratio was 1.71, which means that they say that this improvement, for every dollar spent, will return $1.71 in benefit due to reduction in accidents and those costs associated with it. associated with it. As they say, their deciding factor on this grant for roundabout is it has to at least meet a one-to-one. So we, we think we're, we're a great candidate for that. And kind of get to the bottom line is that there's two elements of the safety improvements. One is the roundabout itself and then making sure there's adequate lighting there and they actually give you credit for, for a lighted area. So if you kind of look at the totals, we're, we're thinking that the project in total is about $1.3 million. The wonderful thing about this grant is a 10% match. So with those numbers, our liability would be 130,000, where the state would be providing somewhere close to 1.17. So I, I think this is a good project and if y'all are comfortable, I would like to advance a resolution of support for y'all to consider and that we can go ahead and make that application and, and get it moving closer to becoming a reality.
That'd be great. That's, that's a really dangerous intersection.
Yes. Yeah, it, it's, it's kind of a, everybody should, it is really wild to go through the workshop and see what they say a value of a serious injury really is. And, and, you know, it's kind of creepy to, to start putting numbers to that. But, you know, it, it, there is a, there is a cost to accidents. And that is all, counsel.
Anything?
On the roundabout comments on that?
I think it'd be great. It's a great cost. Mr. Johnson, I do want to say that on the, in particular, the roundabouts on the east side of Fairway, not Fairway, east side of Fairway, say where I do a slice it all the time. East side of, of 98. The, we had mentioned several years ago when we first applied for those that we were going to, going to engage COPA, the Committee on Public Art, and try to have some art works and fitting with Fairhope. We put in the center of those roundabouts and they urged us at the time, "Don't muddy the water with the grants because don't include that. Get the project done and then come back and, and then maybe have a competition to put art there." I'd like to see us get back on that. That, that's, that's been left by the wayside somehow and, and, and we, we, I think we need some art out there in those roundabouts. And I think it'd be very fitting for Fairhope and, and, and very beneficial for people that, that live east of 98 that feel like maybe sometimes they don't get the same treatment as the people west of 98.
And you and Cherry Lee must be sharing notes because she's been in my ear about that too. And, and, and I'm absolutely a fan of that idea and I think that's definitely something we, we need to complete those two on the east side. Because as you noticed, the center has been left pretty much un-landscape. There's, there, there is a, a, a space waiting for something to be a centerpiece.
That was the intent. So, I mean, I would encourage you to engage COPA and just hand it off to them and work with them, let them handle it.
Already done. So, yeah, I did. I met with the executive director there and I was told not to muddy the waters tonight because we wanted to focus on moving, getting the grant done first.
The state doesn't want to hear about art, but.
Not talking this roundabout.
Yeah. We'll do that in a year or two.
Yeah, we'll do that in two years.
But COPA has been engaged and they do want to work with us. Their co-chairs and their exec, the executive director, the art center very much wants to work with us and they plan to actually come to the council and talk about that in a future meeting.
I mean, well, we, we just, we decided that's three, four years ago. I said, "Tell them to get busy."
I think that, yeah, they want to.
I mean, they have our permission to get busy and bring us some concepts.
And, and one of the neat things about roundabouts is that the designers and those people say that having a centerpiece that doesn't allow you to really know what's going on the other side is beneficial to the operation of the roundabout. Because some folks pull up to it and they see somebody doing something all the way across that has no effect on their decision-making. If there's a beautiful sculpture or something of that nature, it, it allows them to make the decision to enter and keep moving. So it's actually a benefit to have a centerpiece that, that obstructs but also enhances the aesthetics. So, thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right. Number five, real quick, and councilman, I'm going to ask you to, if you have committee updates to give them during your council comments, if you need to tonight. Discussion of amending the beach access fees. Guys, I think that we probably missed the mark when we passed the ordinance in the last meeting. I think, and I've talked to many of the people in the revenue department. I've actually sat up there and witnessed people come through the line and, and just witness what goes on there at the revenue counter and, you know, what these people are being subjected to. And I, and I think where we missed the mark was we actually took a benefit away from people that had a benefit. And I don't think that was our intent. I think our intent was to simply raise the fees for the people that pay fees. And so I think that for the, I'm going to tell you what I think the solution is. And I can tell them if you agree or not. I've, I've talked to, Jason is here and he is welcome to come up here. Why don't you come up here and sit while I talk and then if you want to interject. The ladies and men up there are both getting beat up pretty bad up there. I'm not saying this because they're getting beat up so much as I think we really took a benefit away that wasn't unintended. We only allow the city residents to get into the park for free and I. And it was prior, it was city residents and those with Fairhope utilities. And then we talked about people that may live a great distance. And so we decided to not allow non-residents in without the fee. But I think a, a solution would be add two parts to the ordinance. And that would be if you live in 36532 and you have a utility, because if you live outside the city limits, you're paying a premium on your utilities. So if you live in 36532 and you have a, and that would be any Fairhope utility, you would be included. You could get the sticker for the park. And then the third, second thing we should add, which would be the third provision, would be if you're a city employee. Those of you who have city employees that don't live in the jurisdiction and would like to, you know, enjoy a lunch under an oak tree.
Just show their badge.
And just show their employee badge. And I think that that would be a benefit for employees and, you know, that, that we may have taken away. I don't know that it was ever in the, in the ordinance, but we should, we should put it in there so that, you know, and it, and it doesn't have to be, you know, families that are not with the employee. It should be, you know, those, their, their families with them accompanied by the employee and all they need to do is show their badge. That's what I think the fix is. I've talked to Jason at length about this. Do you want to give your comments?
Yeah, I think the biggest complaint was from the people that live within the 36532 and, and, you know, have a service with us and all of a sudden we took that away from them. We really haven't had anybody come in from, you know, because we have gas service all the way to Baymanett, all through Daphne. We haven't gotten any complaints from those people, but it's mainly been the ones that really, I mean, I guess you would consider them living in Fairhope, it's just not within the corporate limits. You know, but those people you'd be giving it back to.
When we discussed the fee increase, we were just thinking about a fee increase. We didn't necessarily think, "Oh, if we exclude everybody that's getting it now, we're going to make all this additional revenue." That wasn't, I don't think that was our intent.
And I don't, I don't think anyone who's been paying utilities for 20 years and has had a sticker that whole time and now all of a sudden they don't qualify, I don't think that, that's not what it was, was the goal of this at all.
If council's so inclined and it would have to be unanimous to walk it on the agenda tonight, I've, I've asked the clerk to write up an ordinance that would remend it. And I think with, it's in here, it's already in there, okay? I would love to see it introduced. I'd love to see us address it tonight, nip this in the bud before Memorial Day. I think it'd go a long way to helping people out. This is my thoughts. But if somebody's not comfortable yet, then we won't bring it up because if one person opposes it tonight or is not ready, then we can't, we can't vote on it tonight.
Councilman, no, no over there.
I know, I said no.
All eyes to the right.
All letters to Jay Robinson.
Well, you know, I mean, for those that paid attention several weeks ago when we voted on this, my proposal at the time was to include everybody in 36532 area code. So I'd like everybody to know, we're just going back to my original idea that we voted on.
No, it's a caveat. You have to have, you have to have utility, plus a utility.
So I'm in favor of my own idea, yes. I will, I am in favor of this. With the caveat, yes. Do caveat.
Okay. Anybody opposed?
No.
Okay, when we get to the, the regular session, then I'll ask them in the agenda to add that item. And we'll, we'll correct that wrong right away. We've got, thank you, Jason. We've got just a few minutes. This is Mayor Wilson's topic discussion of budget poll.
I'm thinking that.
Okay, Jill.
So what this is, is I, I'd like to call it more of a citizen survey. You know, with budget here, I'm always looking for improved ways to do the budget. And I actually looked to Auburn. They kind of set the bar very high. They, you know, have a much bigger city and of course, our poll would be scaled down significantly. But, you know, with, we're trying to always look for ways to be more, more transparent. And we want to not only prioritize what's best for the city, but we, you know, would like to hear citizens' input. For example, you know, on a scale to say, you know, one to five, how do you feel about city infrastructure? That kind of thing. And, you know, rate your ideal priorities in order from, you know, one to four, so that we could kind of get a starting point for which to measure progress. And although that may not be implemented in time for this budget, I think that it would, you know, it, it would allow us to get that point out there for, as far as to measure our progress and to see kind of what, what citizens feel is, you know, their, their priorities and what, because I feel like that's important too. It's not, it's not just about us, it's about them also. So I, I think that better, it's, it's better entitled citizen survey, in my opinion. And so that's what, that's what we're trying to do, just something to improve the budget process. It's just a performance measure more than anything. And it's not to say that, you know, if the citizens want this, they're going to get it right away. That's, that's not what we're saying. We're, we're just trying to get a poll, a small poll and, and just kind of go from there. And that's, that's what that is.
Questions, counsel?
Do we have any ideas as to how much this would cost?
We do. Lynn, do you remember the figure for?
It was five to 15, depending on, on who we used.
Okay.
Those are figures by, that had been used by another, another city who had done it.
Counsel, any comments, questions?
I feel like we got one of these a year or two ago in the mail with the utility. Bill, I just, I don't know what the, what the actual response is. I mean, I looked at the one that Auburn did and I think they had about 500 people respond. They've probably got 50,000 people, you know, in town that might be counting the college students. I just, I just wonder, I mean, I think it's always great to get citizen input, but, you know, I just don't know how much you get out of them.
15,000 out of, I mean, have you got, you know, have you got, what was that?
If you got 500 out of, you know, 18,000.
Mm-hmm.
We would be using.
That'd be pretty strong, actually, I think.
Yeah. We would be using, and I'm late to this conversation, but where I picked up towards the tail end, we would be using off of our garbage accounts.
Right.
Those are for sure, we know. And we have 6,500 accounts. So that's what we would be starting with. And then the fee is dependent upon whether or not it's a full-blown mail or if it's a phone survey, prices are different.
I don't see a benefit personally.
I would say, I, I personally would, instead of having a poll, I'd rather have people contact us. The council's here to do the budget. Anybody that would like to do it can contact us at any time and come up to the meeting and talk to us.
And, and they do. But you're, you're not getting a full rounded picture. You're getting a specific person or groups of people that come directly to you because they know you or, or, you know, in particular, are better than anybody else. You're not getting a full picture of what the citizens of Fairhope are looking at. You are getting one channel and there are at least five channels sitting up here.
But if you get, if you get less than 10% responding, you're not getting a full picture either.
That's true, but we don't know that we would be getting less than 10%.
You can look at any, you know, a survey sent out, you're not going to get a, a high response rate.
I always be honest.
And priority, keep the crap out of the bay, plant the flowers and pick up the garbage.
Is that what they're coming to you with, Robert?
Picks up the utilities.
I, I get, I mean, we get input as council members, hundreds. I mean, it's, it's, it's every day. I mean, it's something every day and I, I don't know, I think that.
And we welcome that, just FYI.
We do.
Well, this would be something that you would put charts and graphs to and actually put into a budget document. And it could be posted online for, you know, citizens to see exactly what percentage voted for this, what percentage voted for this. It's an, it would go along with, with visuals.
To get through all the details you would have to have to give the citizens all the information that they need to determine all the priorities that we have is, I don't know. I'm not a fan. That's just me, though.
Yeah, I mean, I, I do believe there is some hesitation in general with surveys because I think most people know that the large majority of people do not respond to them. I mean, I, I kind of agree with what Jimmy said is that I, I'm, I'm always in favor of citizen input out of what we've discussed. I mean, I think if I was in favor of any of it, it would be more a limited, limited scope, limited cost option. But then I, if it was a phone call, I'd want to know, I mean, who's picking what area they're calling because every, different areas have different, is it random? Is it intentional? I mean, because if you call, you know, primarily in one area, you're going to get one issue. If you call in another, you're going to get another issue.